2016 Meeting of the Scarborough Town Council and we're going to have a workshop concerning Haggis Parkway today and I'm going to ask the town manager to introduce the matter.
Certainly, there's a matter on your agenda that we can get to and hopefully time will allow during the workshop to get into some of that if you wish, but we thought it'd be advantageous to have a workshop because to introduce it for a couple of reasons. This council has been fairly clear to staff that, and we totally agree, that Haggis Parkway really needs kind of a new, breathe some new life into the area. In fact, late June, as I recall, there was a meeting of several, three or four folks on this table, but the Long Range Planning, Planning Board, and SEDCO Board all met at the county, country, federal credit union and really had kind of a kickoff conversation around a number of things, including some preliminary ideas of how to kind of restart or reboot Haggis Parkway. And a number of those things are in motion. In the subsequent weeks or months, there's been some other development interest and activity that's kind of come to us and you may recall that over the course of the last four or five months, you've considered some different multifamily changes in other districts, the T and D first and then some of the TVC zones and the VR2 and IV zones. And so kind of in keeping with that, what we're bringing forward and on your agenda tonight is really what we'll characterize as kind of a housekeeping. It's exactly the same sort of philosophy, but it considers those sorts of uses in the HP zone. They are allowed now, but for the same reasons that we changed the other zones, there's some limitations. So we didn't want to jump right into the specifics of that particular Haggis Parkway zone change without providing some context to where we're going with the overall zone, really anticipating the obvious question, why are we advancing this and not the other things at this point? So with that, Karen's put together a couple of slides just to guide some of the conversation and then we'd love to use the balance of time to answer your questions.
Thank you.
If that's permissible.
Great. Thank you guys for being willing to talk about Haggis Parkway and the developments trends within the town and where we think Haggis is really fitting in. So as Tom said, you know, the first thing we always want to look at is, you know, really, where's the market? And we really did take a look at the market in 2016 and we've also looked at the market, I think, a couple of previous years when we've been trying to make sure that Haggis Parkway is really meeting market demand. And so we wanted to just step back for a second and talk about really what's trending in the market, what we see out there in terms of the types of companies that are coming to talk with us. And this is town-wide, actually really region-wide in some respects for some of this. You know, we've been talking about this for several months, probably a year, that, you know, the industrial supply within the region and certainly within Scarborough is low. There are a couple of things that I think are affecting my assessment of how low they really are, depending on who you talk to, it's a crisis, but what I've seen in the last few months are a couple of different things. One, we've had a couple of new projects come through that really are catering to the small manufacturer. So we've got two of those coming online, you know, within the year that will, I think, you know, solve at least some immediate need. I also think that as we go through, we've talked about this at SEDCO and with the Long Range Planning Committee, that there may actually be some real underutilized space in the various industrial sectors, certainly in the industrial park. If you drive through, you often see pretty empty parking lots and so you've got to think, well, where is that? Is that something that's about to come on the market? Is there space there that with a little prompting, they might be interested in renting out? So that's really what SEDCO staff is in the process of doing is really going door-to-door and we're going to start assessing how much space is really in. We're going to start with the Scarborough Industrial Park first. We're really pleasant to the loans right now. We want to really talk about the industrial park and get a sense of really what's happening out there. Because there are a couple of spaces that I think have been really empty for a long time. I think there may be some that had longer leases and somebody left and so there isn't that, you know, emphasis to get it back on the market, but that's really what we're trying to assess. Again, we talked about a couple of new rentals coming on and we did resolve a few years ago, the light industrial area that really just hasn't played in the market yet, there's really not a lot of property for sale there. So I think that it's not quite ripe yet to meet existing need. When we talk about the office landscape, certainly offices what we think of when we're talking about Haggis in particular, the things that we're finding are true in, you know, in the region as well as the Northeast as well as the country as a whole, is that there's a lot of emphasis on redesigning offices for better efficiency as opposed to building new. Some of the things factoring into that are certainly a lack of, you know, there's just not enough construction workers right now and the cost of doing construction is pretty high. So the few projects that are out there have been coming in over budget and, you know, the timeline's spreading out. There's just not enough people in the construction field for a variety of reasons. We're also finding that the office really wants more flexible space. They don't want traditional office. Part of that is related to, you know, lower square footage per employee, there's more mobile workers, people are working at desks like this rather than having their own spots. So there's really a lot going on that's changing the dynamics of the office market, whereas 10 years ago, you might be looking at 400 square feet per employee, now with new concepts, you know, I've heard as low as, you know, 75 to 100 square feet. That is, that happens when you do have mobile workers who aren't, who aren't coming in every day, so there's some shared space going on there. So that's really affecting the ability to build and really what people want. And again, the existing supply that's on the market in Scarborough has really loosened up a little bit. We've got, you know, we've got a couple of larger spaces that we really haven't had before. There's 9,000 square feet over, you know, in the Roundwood Development, there's actually a little bit more than that, that's been on the market for a while, rental market for lease, not for sale. There's also, you know, the space that's getting built across the street, so we've got 4,000 square feet of office that's going to come online as soon as Bessie Square finishes, above the restaurant is where that 4,000 is going to be. She also has, Cindy also has the vacant space in the existing building. So there really is as much as 8,000 square feet right there and, you know, there's some other office buildings that never got built that were permitted. So there really is some real flexibility at this point, meeting some immediate needs. The other thing that's coming online is this race for multifamily. We've been getting a lot of interest in multifamily, you know, not just in Haggis, but throughout the entire, I think every town in Cumberland, York County is probably facing this issue about multifamily. It's just the apartment supply in the traditional areas like Portland and South Portland, the vacancy rates are so low at this point that there's no supply out there. There was a demand study that was done that really talked about the need for as much as 6,000 new units needed between now and 2018. Some of that is single-family, some of it is specifically multifamily, but there really is a lot of demand. The other thing that I think about with respect to multifamily is, you know, I think that having some diversity in our housing choice may really put us in a better situation for attracting new office and new professional development buildings simply because, you know, people want to be closer to where they work, people are concerned about workforce. So I think it really does play into, you know, the economic development picture. Next, we really wanted to talk about what we've done in Haggis. We've done a lot of work, I should say you guys have done a lot of work with respect to Haggis. So in 2012, we really did add a lot of flexibility in this zone. We added medical office, we added, you know, the R and D, the high technology, we added educational uses, we added health clubs, places of assembly, we've added some, we wanted to give people flexibility and had some small-scale energy facilities, elderly and nursing homes were added, and multifamily was added in 2012. Now, the caveat to the multifamily is that Haggis was always considered to be, and still is, you know, a primarily a commercial development area. So they did put this 60-40 split in. So the current ordinance says, you know, if you're going to have a mixed-use project, 60% should be commercial, 40% can be residential. You know, also in 2012, we did a little bit of streamlining the process. We added the performance standards to make it easier to do some of those other uses to add some flexibility. We did add the ability to do the plan, development, review process, and we removed sort of an archaic economic development overlay zone. There were some switches to the boundary in 2012. The area that is between Payne Road and the Turnpike Exit, that actually got moved from Haggis Parkway Zone to E2 and that was in order to allow to concentrate more commercial there and the gas stations and the service stations were allowed to be there. And then in 2015, you know, we added the food and the small batch processing. So again, we've tried very hard to keep up with the market and to allow some of these additional uses. So we wanted to look, what do we think we should do in the short term? One, just because we did take a look and say, I think we're pretty good with the market, that doesn't mean there's not going to be some use that comes up that we're going to need to rethink, maybe some standards in there, but again, we've tried very hard to keep up with the market. What I think has happened is that people may not know that we've made some of these changes. We don't, we haven't done a full campaign that's really rebranding Haggis as not necessarily the campus-style development, but you can do other things here. And that's one of the things that we're working on for this year. We don't think we need to wait, we don't have to think anymore about it, we just need to do, we need to retell the story of Haggis. We also talked about really thinking about some incentives that are along the lines of the streamlined review. Dan Bacon has really looked at this in some detail and felt like he may be able to come up with really a staff review process for building on Haggis. And doesn't mean nothing would go to the planning board, but it means a lot of the development review could be done at administrative level and that could fast-track certain types of projects. And we think in the building community, that's a pretty good incentive if you can fast-track. And then again, we wanted to come back to the multifamily, the amendment that we're going to talk about tonight at the council meeting, as Tom said, really a housekeeping issue to keep it consistent with the other zones, to remove that, the density limitation on the per-building. So again, we're really thinking with that as making it consistent with the other zones. And again, we already allowed multifamily to happen there. And just another reiteration, there's a lot of interest in multifamily. But these are the things that are short-term, we don't have to, we're not waiting for any big study or anything like that, we're ready to go on looking at these things. But we don't want to ignore the fact that, you know, the COF plan is getting, ready to kick off and it certainly is time to look at Haggis in comparison to all of our other commercial zones, but again, what we don't want to do is say, oh, the COF plan is coming up, so we shouldn't do anything else until that is done. Because we don't really think there's going to be a great deal of tinkering, there may be some on the edges to, you know, as we think through other objectives, longer-term objectives, but we think we're ready to go right now with some of the issues of the rebranding and really talk about administrative reviews and some other incentives. And I think that's just a quick overview of where we are and I think what we wanted to do is check in and see where everyone on the council is.
Yeah, on the specific amendment before you this evening, it's fairly straightforward, it's really in keeping with exactly what we've done in five or six other zones. There are some nuances. The HP zone is predominantly commercial, whereas the other ones are predominantly residential, so we're suggesting a slightly larger footprint, 12,500 as opposed to 7,500 and 10,000 in other cases. We think those buildings can, that size can be tolerated given the other development potential allowed elsewhere in the HP zone. But we're not suggesting any, we are suggesting a slight change in the height to 45 feet for three stories, which is consistent with what we've done in the other zones, but we're not at this point suggesting any changes to that 60-40 split. And I flag that because we have one, I'll say, very viable multifamily project that's actually been reported in the press locally that can meet that standard. So that's not a barrier to that project because of the uniqueness of it. It may well be a challenge for a multifamily project on a vacant piece of ground because of the challenges of building commercials. So again, I just want to flag, what's before you is fairly narrow, fairly simple in its essence, but going down the road, there may be some challenges particularly on that ratio.
Could you, it might be because I went too late, I apologize, but could you explain the 60-40 split?
Sure, it's intended to say, Haggis Parkway was meant to be primarily a commercial zone. So we wanted to add multifamily, but multifamily is done in the context of a mixed-use, either a mixed-use building or a mixed-use project. And so the project itself should be 60% floor area, the space in commercial and the other 40% can be in residential.
Got you, so it's not a per-project basis, it's not an overall.
Correct, correct, per-project.
I recall the discussion in the politics at the time, there was great sensitivity to this kind of really rebounding totally the other way, that we really want to keep, at the time, the council wanted to keep that commercial aspect being the predominant piece to the developments.
As you were speaking, I have a couple of things that came to mind that people, I think I know the answers to, but people may want to hear the answers to. And one is, why hasn't Haggis Parkway developed? I mean, we keep making changes and tweaking and it's still sitting over there, that's one. Secondly is, I know there are some people sitting out there hearing, oh my gosh, we're going to build multifamilies. I know there's been a lot going on in Westbrook over the project off of Spring Street. And I, this is my own thing, impact fees for schools and are they per-unit or are they per-building? And then, yeah. I'll go to two that actually came to.
I'd dive right into that.
Yeah, please do, because it's always like, see what's going on over here.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm sure there are folks in the audience who can, you know, can speak to this as well. So, you know, we've always said Haggis is an area for large-scale development and commercial development, but it's not the easiest land to develop. In other words, you know, there are wetlands, there's separation between the properties. It's not that it's not good land, it's just that it's not like a traditional industrial park or whatever. So there are some, there are some limitations in terms of the land that's along Haggis Parkway. There's also, you know, the issue that our vision originally of campus-style development really isn't getting built much these days really anywhere. Not saying that it couldn't happen, there are a couple of big players out there that, believe me, we've been in touch with, you know, who are.
They don't take our calls anymore.
Please, don't you want to talk to us anymore? So, you know, there are a couple, there are a couple of big players, but the timelines too, you know, have changed in terms of how long people are taking to make decisions. And I think one of the things that we thought, or certainly I thought, is there's all of this discussion of, yeah, all right, we hit the recession and we understood that, that there wasn't going to be a lot of development happening during the recession. And then as we came out of the recession and the economy's getting healthier and healthier, we kept thinking, well, there's this pent-up demand, you know, there's a lot of, our assessment, there's a lot of money in, right now, in some of the larger firms, but they haven't necessarily moved forward to building new buildings. And there's also been a glut until really the last year or so throughout the region of existing office space. So I'm hoping that we are at that, you know, crest where a lot of the inventory has been used up. The economy is sound, if not robust, and there may be some more development happening. I think the other thing that we've come across is the development that did happen, they wanted to be an okay, the traditional office development. They wanted the amenities, they wanted the walkability, you know, that closeness to other things. And that's really what we're hearing from the office community. That's a big issue.
Is the multifamily sort of the carrot? Because there is a high demand for it, but in a 60-40 world, it forces the developer to introduce element of commercials that might not otherwise come.
That is, that's a very good question and we've certainly talked with some people who are concerned about the 60-40 split, so.
It may need to be flipped or a different ratio to really reflect what the market will bear.
Could you talk about the impact before we get off these other guys?
It also means that multifamily works better, is more compatible in a commercial setting if you're going to have places for it than in a single-family residential setting. So other questions?
Yes, that's going to come up, people aren't sure.
The school impact fee ordinance applies per-unit, so it would apply in this case. And there's actually some pretty good evidence, given the existing multifamily developments as to how many children, really depends how many bedrooms they're building, is largely determining how many kids are created or other impacts. And I have my own opinions about the Parkway, but I'll save those for another time.
Peter, then Chuck. Yeah, I guess my question is kind of just building off Jim Marie's, but have we looked at where the, I mean, is this a demand issue? Because I actually, you know, I mean, when we think about office space, but if you look at what's been happening with microbrews around Portland, I mean, they have, there's a new place, Vago's just announced a huge new production facility, they're just exploding. And it would seem to me that would be a great place to develop. So have we targeted the right thing, but more importantly, as we talk about who we want the target to be and maybe we need to shift from office space to something else. But the other question that I had is what's best for the town? I mean, when we look at that land, is it better to have sort of industrial buildings that have salaries and incomes and people here and jobs? Or is it better to have multifamily because we get the, which is the best, healthiest place for town to be? And I think that's, I'd be really, I mean, it seems like it's prime real estate and just wondering.
I have a changing opinion on that. I have to say that simply listening to both what's happening in suburban Boston and what we've been hearing from, you know, developers here and what I know from the business community, labor is the key to what's going on in this region. There's simply not enough of it. Some of it is, you know, and part of that, not all of it, but a part of that is definitely the housing community. You know, we're big on trying to recruit people to come to this region and then we get them here and there's, you know, it can take them six months to find an apartment. So I think that the multifamily development is very much a part of the economic development strategy and picture. You know, whether or not it belongs in Haggis Parkway in some fashion, that's in some respects up to you, but as a community as a whole, I think multifamily does increase our ability to have a good workforce here, to have employees available for, you know, for our employers. And I think it's a, you know, there's a higher, there's more people in more diverse incomes that need the multifamily at this point. You've got folks who are not willing, not, and Jim Marie could probably talk to this better than I can, there are people who really don't want to buy at this point, you know, so there's that.
But I guess my question is, and that, you know, maybe at a later date.
Sure.
But it would, and I hear that about it, it gets the labor here.
Right.
So that we have the real, for the town, it's sort of our cash flow and some other things we're facing.
Right.
Does the industrial applications where we get the property values, plus you have activities that people may be coming in from outside of Scarborough to spend money at Scarborough businesses, what is healthier for us? And I'd just be curious from later date.
Sure.
I understand about the workforce.
Right, right.
But we need to diversify sort of our revenue base and what gives us the biggest lift. And I'd just be curious.
Sure. I know, it's, in some respects, it's a, you know, for the future, it's a little bit of a chicken or the egg, you need both to happen and, you know, we're looking for that balance. I will say that, you know, the industrial in terms of, you know, office rents or rents, they're about half the price of an office development. So, you know, industrial probably rents at five or seven bucks, but the valuation is the key for us.
And I guess I, I didn't mean industrial, I meant commercial versus multifamily, business versus multifamily.
But that's been the challenge is that the market doesn't seem to be, it's not there for commercial or office.
But I guess my question is, it seems to be there in other places. I mean, I just, you go back to the microbrews.
Right.
They're expanding, Westbrook, they're expanding.
Exactly.
Yeah, but, so there is some market.
A place matters to those kinds of uses, right?
Yeah.
Place matters hugely and that's one of the challenges with Parkway, it is kind of no man's land and it's been a bit stigmatized for all the reasons Karen mentioned and I think that's why we need to breathe some new life into it, kind of reboot it as it says.
Right, right. But it is why, it is why we wanted specifically, we knew that this is a hot industry and not just breweries, but food production in general and it's why we did the amendment and it's why we're, you know, we're working with some other groups. We've actually identified a good 200 firms that are either breweries or in food production that are in just the six really urban communities that are just waiting to expand. And so that's one of the things that we need to get before those, and I agree with you, you know, that's a great market for us. And I think we can make, I think we can make the case for that.
The reason we've been so protective, I guess it's obvious, but it's the heart of our community, the geographic center of our community, a gateway in many respects. And I think had the decision been made that it developed conventional industrial, it probably would be built out. Certainly if we allowed distribution and warehousing, it would be built out, but that would really change forever the heart of our community and not produce the kind of ratables that are attractive frankly, and job creation. And that's a lot of square footage, but it's not valuable and not all the people working it.
John? Yeah, there's a lot been said and a lot been kind of talked about in the sense that drives creativity in the conversation, so I think it's really great. So, you know, full disclosure, I'm in the banking world, so I finance those breweries and I finance those little businesses and Karen is absolutely correct, a brewery does not want to build, a brewery in the middle of wetland in which there is nothing around it to drop people in. They want some type of aesthetic value in which people will come and sit out on a patio, even if it's a little bit of traffic that goes by the front, at least it's something. So there's some challenges there. You know, just historically, since I've been here, since the start of the Haggis Parkway, I mean, we've been talking about both the potential and what some might perceive as mistakes that we've made around Haggis Parkway for the last 20 years. You know, I remember the, I don't want to call them fights, but the debates around when People's Heritage Bank, which is now TD, wanted to put their big facility there and at the time, it just wasn't the right timing. I won't get into the nuances, then there's been so many other things. I think that this is the. I think that this is the time in which we, I'm excited about Sedco's focus on this particular project, and I had asked about this when I was the liaison, because whatever we can do as a council to support you and support Sedco, I hope that we do that, even if it includes monetary support, because it's important that we do that now based on the economic cycle that we are in, no matter how you view that, because it will take us out the longer time. The two, the three things that I wanted to kind of bring up was first, the challenge, I think, that still presses that particular project or that particular area is infrastructure costs as it relates to the original assessment fees, as well as the sewer and the utilities, which goes into the whole issue around construction. So the question I have is whether or not the town can designate that particular zone as a specialized TIF zone to maybe provide an economic incentive for more businesses to come in. I don't know if that's ever been done, you know, a zone, it's usually done by contract and by individual project, but maybe what we do is instead of doing it on a per-project basis, is looking at it from a zone basis.
That's to do prospectively without-
Right.
Because that might be the incentive. The second piece is that what, at least I'm seeing in my, my particular world is really, it's not just about the big boxes, because that's an easy sell in the sense of getting the biggest project in the biggest space and use up the most land as possible so that, you know, the development is looking at more of an incubator, kind of like those small, what are they called, like those small business condos?
Sure.
You know what I'm talking about? Like on the industrial part, on that, I think it's called, is it Lincoln Ave, Washington Ave?
Yes, yes.
You know, we have those, they look like little garages, but a lot of small businesses are using those as an incubator to get started, to then move into something. So, you know, whether or not that's where we focus as well, so that we get a developer to go in there and at least do a string of those kind of small projects and have some type of incentive. And one thing that I always wanted to see, my last comment, Scarborough moved into at the right time, is really a similar model that Saco Bitterfoot has, which is, they're, they're a Sedco, or I don't know what their abbreviation is, actually offers loan guarantees and loan incentives to the small businesses, they're called microloans, in which they have a program to support, whether it's an upgrade to technology, or whether it's a startup cost that, you know, banks might need in addition to FAME and SBA and whatever the other agencies are, you know, getting us to that stage so that we can truly support.
Sure.
The last comment, I promise, I agree with Tom, I think that, you know, Charles Colgan, the former state economist, said about two years ago now, he said, "The only way that the local economy is going to change and grow with the demand is if we change the black box that we've kind of created around ourselves over the last decade." And whether the 60-40 split should be changed to 40-60 should seriously be looked at, because that is where the demand is, but there can be a balance, it just might be opposite of what we initially thought, because that's something we looked at, I think it was 10 years ago.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be some, if multifamily is the focus, there'll certainly be some spin-off supportive type commercial uses, whether it's a coffee shop or a brewery, you know, if people are there, other things will happen.
Right.
There's demand, so it's, it's an interesting conversation, and I really think we're at the point that we need to be sensitive to where the market's going and seize some opportunities.
Well, well, mine was really a follow-on on the, on the split, I was just curious, two things. One, you may have mentioned a project earlier that potentially would move ahead, would that be the case, were we to make that split, or was that looking for 100%? And then the other question was about-
Enterprise Park?
Yeah, Enterprise Business Park is looking at developing their third and fourth phases in a multifamily fashion. So that 60-40 works because they're already built out, they already kind of meet that standard.
But that's not for a project, that's, so that's including the whole park and broader?
The whole park, yeah, it's one parcel.
Right.
But I think it could be very problematic for a brand-new project on vacant, vacant ground.
Got it. And then the other question was like, what are the mechanics of having that split happen? Like that goes through a committee, I'm assuming, to investigate?
Well, no, it was just-
It's part of the same ordinance.
Yeah.
Same ordinance.
I mean, changing it, changing, yeah.
At this point, it's not, it's not part of the two simple amendments that we bring forward, we just flag it as a potential issue going forward.
Got it, but it would go through, like, long-range planning?
Exactly.
And the ordinance, planning board.
It could, we felt comfortable advancing these on a staff basis, just because they're so in lockstep with what you've done. I think if we're getting into that ratio, we'd like to broaden that conversation through other-
Chris?
So it strikes me that, obviously, we have some development in town, we've got some pretty decent development in town. What are you hearing from people, obviously, when you go in and someone says, "Hey, I want to move to Scarborough." We're pitching Higginson, we're pitching Oak Hill, we're pitching, just get them in town, then look at what our options are. What are you hearing from people when you say, "Look, we've got this great project here at Higginson"? What's the feedback you're getting? It says, "No, we'd rather have Oak Hill, we'd rather be somewhere else," because it sounds like we're, we're trying to guess kind of what things are going on, and, and it continues to sit there undeveloped while development happens throughout the rest of town.
Right, right. Well, I think we're running into just some of the things that we've, we've talked about in terms of desires. And the desire, even for some of the larger-scale projects that we pitched that, in our minds, we would have liked to have seen on Higginson, have been interested in Oak Hill.
See, kind of country federal credit union, they could have very easily been out there, probably easier and cheaper.
Sure.
But they made a conscious decision, they wanted to be where things were, so their employees could get services and walk to the grocery store and-
Yeah, and that's true, so, but, but that's never going to change for Higginson unless we develop all the way up around it and get to that point. So I guess my question is, is do we hold on and we wait for that, that magic development to happen around it, and then it becomes a very desirable area? Or do we look at something, you know, a smaller development area first and try and split it up for something?
We've long held, held the belief that what comes first is really going to dictate what follows, right? And so we'd love to have the first project really be the, the standard bearer. It may well be that if, if the people are there, the other uses will follow. I don't have the crystal ball, I don't have those answers, but that's where the hot market is right now, and that's where people are knocking on the door.
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering, look, we've been doing this for, to Sean's about 10 years now, or I guess?
Twenty.
Right. So, so, you know, at what point do we decide collectively that, you know, maybe the investment is in another area, or the focus is in another area, we let it sit for a while, or we shift direction? I mean, I'm all for pushing it forward if we think now is the time and the opportunity, but I would hate to just continue to do what we've been doing for the past 20 years, hoping that we get a different result.
Starting in 2012 and 15, and now again tonight, we're really talking about shaking things up. We stood, we stood pat for 10 years, thinking that the utopian vision of the corporate campus was going to build, and that just was not going to happen. And it was only then that we, we started to kind of loosen things up, and here we are still with not much development interest.
Do you want to walk us forward on where you think you'd like to go now, timeline, and the method by which we complete our review and announcement?
Sure. Well, the first page is, you know, again, we don't want to be waiting, we think that there, there's a new story to tell about Higginson. We may find that it's not matching up with folks again, but we think there's some, some new threads, new ideas about Higginson that we can work with now. And we have, we-
And maybe some incentives that will help come back to you from on, whether it's TIPS or administrative reviews, I think that's part of the rebranding as well.
Right, right. And I do think it's about streamlining and looking, looking at the process. We've been tinkering with uses, but let's see if we can make it easier to develop, not just, you know, we, I think we've gone a long way towards adding flexibility in terms of uses and in terms of, of development. Now let's, let's tinker with some other pieces of it, you know, right now. And I think that's what you're going to see next is, I would imagine, what, what constitutes an administrative review? In other words, you know, how do we work with the planning, how do we streamline for these properties that have been looked at and looked at and looked at in every which way, you know, there is? How much can we really let, let happen at the staff level? And I think that's a real incentive. And we'll find out, that's part of what we haven't really done before, is work on that side. So there, there's some of that, and we're, I've already engaging with our, we do have a firm that we work with, who does a lot of our market and ad work, and so we're working with them to develop, you know, a new campaign based on a couple of different themes. And that's really what's going to be next.
And they include, you know, changing the name, really kind of starting all over in many respects, because I think, I think the area's stigmatized, and we need to really try to-
I mean, what I'd, what I'd like to get a sense of is, I mean, you can sit tight and say you hope something will happen, because it's an important piece, as Tom pointed out, and you don't want to really just give up and give in.
Right.
On the other hand, the changes that we saw historically added were thoughtful, and some of the ideas that are now being put forward, again, they don't turn the apple cart completely upside down.
Right.
But I, I would say, given the long history of limited success, then continuing to be proactive is a better strategy than kind of standing pat.
Right. We would, I would like to point out that the changes that you made in 2012 did allow the two buildings that we, that, that have been built there. Horizon could not have been built unless we had made those changes to 2012, same with the salt pump climbing company. That would not have been built but for those changes that were made.
And let's not forget about the 450-odd acres right next door to Scarborough Downs property, that has tremendous development potential as well.
Right.
So I would like to see this advanced. I think I get a sense that everyone else has expressed a similar view, and I do think that an element of flexibility in that what comes along may not always fit perfectly into the zone, but yet it's from a overall point of view, not inconsistent-
Right.
-with our goals.
Right.
And so flexibility, I think, is probably a watchword.
Exactly.
So the quick, the quick takeaway is that from a land use point of view, we think that maybe the larger discussion can and should wait for the comprehensive plan, but for this multifamily piece.
Right.
In the near term, we are going to be coming back to you, hopefully with a package of incentives to maybe help breathe some life and a, and a rebranding, and I expect we can do that later in the fall. So it's going to be a, going to be a short-term turnaround.
Anyone else want to add anything, or we all said? Thank you, Karen.
Sure.
Thank you. We'll adjourn momentarily and come back to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. This is the August 17th, 2016 Town Council meeting. And if you would, let's please be called to order and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Counselor Bayvine?
Present.
Counselor Rowan?
Here.
Counselor Katerina?
Present.
Counselor Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Tiazzo?
Here.
Chairman Donovan?
Here. Counselor St. Clair has, I think, some babysitting issues that have tested her ability to be here tonight. Otherwise, all assembled. General public comments, please. Anything that is not on the agenda for this evening, please approach the podium and speak your mind. Minutes of July 20, 2016, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Comments? All in favor? Both unanimous. Adjustments to the agenda, none at this time. Items to be signed with treasures warrants are in order and will be signed later in the meeting. Order 16-49, 6:00 PM, public hearing on the new request from Emily Juno Wheeler for a combined massage establishment, massage therapist, DBA Empower Massage Therapy located at 51 U.S. Route 1. Do I have a motion?
Any public hearing?
Move approval.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seen none? Close that discussion on the motion. Counselor?
I keep reiterating this every time it comes up. Samples.
Samples.
I'm thinking we have more massage therapists per capita than anybody.
I know.
And that goes along with banks.
He's going for comedian of the council. A very good counselor discussion. Do you all in order?
Yes.
Anything further? Nothing? All in favor? Both unanimous. Thank you. New business, order number 16-50, first reading and refer to the planning board for a public hearing, the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance section, Roman numeral 17B, Hagus Parkway District. We have the public present, and I think Karen Martin, the head of our SEDCO Corporation, will introduce this matter to us. Thank you, Karen.
Once again, I apologize for not being Dan Bacon, the planning director. He is out this week, so if you will bear with me, I will try to walk you through this. This amendment to the Hagus Parkway is one that reflects a change to the density requirements for multifamily within the district. This is an amendment that is very similar to the amendments that we've talked about and you have approved in previous residential and the town and village center categories, where what we're doing is really removing the density restriction on a per-building basis. So in other words, we are keeping a footprint for the building at, at least in the Hagus Parkway, at 12,500, but we are not having any density requirement or density restriction. So in other words, you can build smaller units, you can have a little bit more flexibility in terms of development. This is what we've done again in some of the other zones, and we wanted to bring Hagus Parkway up to that consistency. Again, just a reminder that the underlying density for the zone itself remains unchanged. So we're not changing the overall density, we're just talking about how those units are getting built and the structures within the area. One category that we, or one more amendment that we are bringing forward as part of this is a change in the height restriction. We did want to keep the residential units at, I believe it's 45 feet, three stories, and that was just, I felt it was more consistent with some of the other zones in terms of residential. So again, this removes the unit requirement, the density requirement per structure, establishes a footprint for the structure, and it limits the height for residential development.
Questions for Karen? Thank you, Karen. Public comment? Anyone wishing to address this proposed zoning amendment, please approach the podium.
My name is Ben Devine. I am a commercial developer and have developed significant properties in Scarborough, including Scarborough Gallery. I was able to sit through on the workshop, and I applaud this council examining potential amendments to give development potential to the Hagus Parkway. I think these amendments are in order. I, as a developer, am examining a property in that zone and believe that there could be additional amendments and relief that this council could provide, specifically the 60-40 split. However, I think the amendments that Karen's put forth are in the best interest of the development community and the town. I would just like to ask that the council continue to work on potential amendments that could hasten development and be in the best interest of the town. I think you'll be hearing more from my group and potentially other groups as we look at opportunities on the Hagus Parkway. Thanks.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this motion? Seen none? I'll accept the motion. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Who would like to start? Will?
So I guess what jumps out at me is I'm a little confused, and I heard Karen say that the 45-foot height cap kind of brings it in line with the other, I guess, other areas in town. But I guess my question is, if it's a 45-foot building that's residential next to a 75-foot building that's commercial, I guess I don't quite understand why we would draw that distinction there. If you can have a 75-foot building, why limit the use? Well, comment?
Yeah, I think the theory there is that a six-story residential building really takes on a different, it becomes really an apartment building. I think scale does matter, slope roof, those sorts of things. That's really, I believe, what's behind that. And it appears to match with the development community's needs, so I don't, I'm not aware, not been told that will be an impediment, that that's actually workable for them.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Other comments? Counselor Bayvine?
So I'm confused as well on that same topic, but one other additional. And I guess I just, because I'm not on the planning board, so I don't really get into that detail, but I agree with Counselor Rowan. So you could have a six-story, non-residential building next to a three-story residential building, technically. So does that go through, I take it that must go through some type of review process, and it's not allowed as a result of that review process?
It may or may not. It would be something.
All I can picture, and by the way, the reason why I was, I can picture, you've seen those pictures where you have these big, tall buildings, and then you get this little tiny house because the person didn't want to sell? It kind of has that awkward, you know, and that's what you kind of look, that's what you think about when you think about the wording that's here. So that's why, you know, I picked up on that as well. So, I mean, does the review process prevent that from happening?
I would say it prevents it, but I think it would consider impacts, whether it's shadow, you know, light impacts or what have you. That sort of scenario strikes me, it would be the same developer that's proposing a residential and commercial component, so I would expect their proposal would take those matters into consideration.
Right.
And sure, in our discussions, I think Dan Bacon, the planning director, was very concerned
about having that large of a scale of residential development, that the 45 feet really did match better with some of the research that he did in terms of suburban residential development. I agree, you know, it's always potentially, it's possible that you could have somebody come in with that, but I think as far as you'd be doing a plan development, and I think there would be work through the planning board to talk about compatibility and all of that.
Can she, I have one follow-up.
Yes, please.
She seems to be the most knowledgeable. So the other pieces in 26 and 27, where we take out the number of units and replace it with a maximum building footprint at 12.5? Is that the maximum footprint for the multifamily dwellings within the building, or is it the total? Because the way that it reads, it sounds like you can have a residential footprint of 12,500 within a mixed-use building, which based upon, if you're then allowed another 12.5, that's a 25,000 square foot building.
Right.
The way that it reads.
Look at that.
Because there's no, the intent is for the entire size of the building to be 12.5.
Maximum building footprint.
Correct. Let's see.
Just that it, I used to live in a three-story one. I'm just saying, the way that it's written, it could be confused that it's residential dwellings take up 12,500 square feet. So if they can look at that, the planning board can look at that, I'd be happy to refer to the board.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, let's make sure we've got the letter on that, but the.
I just want to make sure. It's supported. I just want to make sure there's no loophole, I guess.
Right. The intent is that the structure itself is 12,500.
Jane Marie?
And this may be covered too, but it popped into my head, what if I were a developer that came in and said I wanted a mixed use in one building? And I'm going to have both the commercial and residential, because I see that in other planned communities around the country that I've been to. So was this covered here, or is that a?
That's a legitimate question.
Yes, you can do, you can do mixed use within a building.
But then what's your limit on height?
That's a good question.
Twenty-six deals, I believe, deals with the mixed-use building. I guess it would depend whether the residential's on the first three floors or the top three floors.
But it doesn't talk about the height. I mean, and I know I'm just asking without, it would be kind of a funny-looking building, but.
Right. No, you know, it implies, and I usually interpret to the strictest category, I mean, if there's a residential use, you are going to be limited to the 45 feet.
But I'd rather not have implication or, you know, loopholes that someone can drive a truck through if that's not what we intend as a community.
I would read this, I would interpret this as the residential use, if there's residential use in the mixed-use building, it's limited to the 45 feet. But I think that's a good question for the planning staff, and we'll make sure that we chat with them.
How do you feel about the issue of first floor? Because oftentimes you'll see first-floor commercial.
Right.
Retail of some fashion, and second, third, fourth floors and up are residential?
I know, my sister lives in Daniel Island in Charleston, and there are some buildings there that actually are, there's a couple of floors that are commercial use, i.e., you know, maybe attorney's offices and dentists and this and that and the other thing. And then there's another floor or whatever, of course, they've got pretty strict height thing, but residential above that. But anyway, that's just one of the things I thought of.
Right.
Well, worth having you and Dan Tom think about, whether in a mixed-use setting, you want to set a different standard, or a more flexible standard.
Because I'd love to see something like that, but that's me.
Other questions? Chris?
So, I mean, it strikes me, we have those examples in Portland. You've got a lot of commercial use first, second floor, with residential above that, especially the downtown district. I kind of read this, that they define what residential use is in paragraphs 24 through 28. And that, to me, if I'm interpreting this properly, anytime you have residential, non-commercial, or mixed use, you are limited to 45 feet, period. So the scenario, I think, that you guys were talking about with the six-story with commercial on the first two floors, you couldn't do a six-foot according to this. So I guess, you know, my question would be from a development standpoint, would be, would that cause people to not want to put the residential in? Or what was the purpose of the 45-foot restriction? Was it just aesthetics? Or was it more from a developmental standpoint that we really wanted commercial only in a taller structure? And I think, to elaborate, if we did a mixed-use, six-stories with two or three first floors commercial, I mean, to me, that becomes an aesthetics issue. I would support this, just as a way to try and see what comes forth for development. I would, my concern, only concern, would be that limitation might discourage a mixed use. I don't know.
We certainly can get Dan Bacon to have input before you consider this further, and that question could be answered at the planning board, should this move forward.
Other comments or questions? All set? All in favor? Both unanimous. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Order number 1651, first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 302, the Scarborough Town Council Rules, Policies and Procedures Manual. Anyone wishing to comment on this, please approach the podium. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? I think the way to approach this, Counselor Bayvine has put a lot of work into this effort, as well as the Rules and Policies Committee. But I would like to let Counselor Bayvine kind of take the lead. He has outlined the substantive and non-substantive provisions. I think we have all got copies of those in front of us. And Sean, you may want to comment, but it may well be that people may want to simply ask questions of Sean on this, flexible as to how we handle this. So Sean, you want to start, and then we'll?
Actually, if I could defer for a moment to maybe if the chair or the committee would like to summarize anything from the committee's perspective?
Sure.
If you want to, I didn't want to step over him.
No, 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 it's fine.
He led this whole group.
I might have done a little bit of the work, but he led the. No, no, Sean, I really appreciate, I mean, this, you know.
Was that a mic drop I heard?
No, I appreciate all the effort, and as the chair said, you've put a ton of effort into doing this. This spreadsheet you've put is great. I mean, I think the only thing I'd add is, you know, we worked as a committee, we've been working on this for spring into the summer, and I think we're all kind of in agreement and support the things that are on here, so with that, I'll turn it back to however you'd like to proceed.
So for the public's awareness, just identify your committee.
It's the Rules and Policy Committee that we've been meeting.
Membership is?
Membership is Sean Bayvine, Will Rowan, and myself.
Good. Thank you.
Sure. So first, I do want to say thanks to the committee for hearing through all of these recommendations, because I did enter this, this is my first year ever on the Rules and Policies, so it is a great lesson. So what I presented really is a four-page table, it's a little bit in larger fonts, because some of us are getting older and our eyesight is weaning, so I apologize for the length of this. But what I've done is I've tried to categorize things into two major categories, which are non-substantive issues and then substantive issues. And really, the distinction is that the substantive issues might require, it does not necessarily mean they have to have some type of strategic discussion, or a discussion about why it's important to make that change, and it could vary from person to person about the need to do so, or how to do so. Where the non-substantive are really grammatical changes to keep up with times with policy language, or corrections of punctuation, and title changes, or corrections, and things like that. So to quickly go over the non-substantive. So in addition to those categorizations, I've also identified what type of change is being requested in a particular group, what the document, and we'll make this available online as well for others. Where in the document is it located by page and by title? What is the consideration that was being asked? And then really abbreviated, tried to not editorialize explanation, as well as tried to keep, not verbose, why the change is being recommended. So as an example, the first item is really just a change in the title. So currently, the current title of this Section 202, or Chapter 202, is the Town Council's Rules, Policies and Procedures Manual. However, if you actually look at the structure of, one, the committee by itself is only called Rules and Policies, so it's not even consistent with that. Two, with the content of what's in the document, it was not consistent as well. So we are recommending that policies are a distinct classification that are not, that are actually located in Chapter 101 of the ordinance. So in that chapter, if you go to it, you'll see there's a fiscal policy, there's pesticide use policy, there is a social media policy, there's 13, 14, 15 different policies that we have set forth, we being the council, and that's where policies. So there's really no policies within this document, they really are procedures. I just wanted to mention that this section really deals with general rules of the council and how it conducts business. There's other grammatical changes and label capitalization, so like rules of order, because it is a classification or an actual title, you know, the R needs to be capitalized and the order needs to be capitalized. So it's kind of like those minor things, I'm not going to go through all of them. One item that is kind of important, but it's, I classify it as non-substantive, is the elimination of what is being listed in our, in that section as consent agendas. The council does actually not use consent agendas. For the public, a consent agenda really groups the routine procedural and information and self-explanatory, non-controversial items into one action. They do not require discussion or strategic thoughts, such as formally-written committee reports, and they're grouped into one motion to be entered into the record. So as an example, you'd enter in maybe the finance committee report, the energy committee's report, financial reports that have already been reviewed and accepted by the finance committee, as well as minutes that are general in nature, and just vote on them once rather than doing them individually. We don't use that process, so we are recommending to eliminate that in its reference everywhere throughout the documents. The other non-substantive items, there's only three others, there's some relabeling, there's also setting limitations for council member comments. Some might consider that a little bit more substantive than as generic as I have, but this has been a standing rule of the council for a few years, and I remember being part of a council for many years, in which you could literally be here 20 minutes listening to council, and even longer, council member comments at the end of the day. So we have been respectful, and we keep that to 10 minutes, and that just simply puts it into the document, acknowledging what our practice is. And then the last one is the use of town, I classify this as non-substantive, it's the use of town letterhead and the correspondence policy. Easiest way to explain this is to tell the story. Back in the day, we didn't have social media, we didn't have Twitter, Facebook, let alone email, I don't even, I don't believe we even had email. So council members literally got a package of town letterhead in which it could use for correspondence that created some angst amongst some people because of what was being written on those, and whether that opinion is being expressed on behalf of the entire written on those and whether that opinion is being expressed on behalf of the entire council or just an individual member, that which created the disclosures issue that's also in there. And the fact is that we live in a very different society today in which letterhead is definitely not a consideration. So we are recommending the elimination of the town letterhead policy as well as the correspondence policy. And I think the explanation there is pretty simple. So with the non-substantive pieces, I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that if the council was willing, is to move approval of all items that are characterized as non-substantive as one motion. And I can answer any questions if that is the will of the council.
So you'd like to divide the question?
Yes. Unless others don't have questions or don't, it's up to you guys.
Councilor, get her in.
Is this where I can ask a question? I just have a question regarding consent agendas.
Yes.
If we take that out of the policy, are we tying the hands of a future council who may wish to institute that?
Exactly.
So my personal comment on that is no, because as we've learned with the state legislature, any governing body can break its own rules and conduct business as it is needed. And I'm being both sarcastic but also realistic about that, because that is true. Second is that there's nothing that says they can't change the policy in the future to add that if they so moved.
That was my only question.
Unless there's some concern over the substantive or non-substantive matters, I say I'm fine having them all entertained in a single motion, unless...
No, I'd like to discuss the substantive one separately, if we could, please.
Good. Then we have, is that a second to Sean's motion to divide the question?
I will. Yes, thank you.
Non, all in favor? Let's deal with the non-substantive issues. Is there...
Okay, yes, sorry, go.
That was a motion to divide the question.
Yep, yep, yep.
Because we're not, we now have two motions. The first is to approve first reading, schedule a public hearing and second reading on the proposed non-substantive changes.
Right.
If I'm correct. And is there any further comment before we vote on that? All in favor? Posed? And now I'll have a, just for the record, a new motion on the substantive matters.
I would move approval to accept the substantive matters.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Discussion, Sean?
So for explanation, and I'll take these, it sounds like I should take these one at a time and then accept questions and then...
Yeah, I think, because I think your analysis and explanation is good. And if there are questions, and I do think there are going to be questions, that we'll direct them to Sean. I think the first one is authorization for resolves and proclamations. Any questions on that? I think, Sean?
So I would like to at least, for the, at least for the public, because we are on TV, is to explain what that does.
Go right ahead.
And then we can, so this authorizes the council chair and town manager to sign resolves and proclamations that recognize individual accomplishments only. So the concern, the attention that this brought forward was, there are a lot of men and women in this community and organizations that do a lot of work, and sometimes recognizing them is time-sensitive, because a lot of volunteers have a lot of work and sometimes forget, I want a resolution to be able to recognize. I got into that recognizing, I think it was Breast Cancer Week a couple months ago, or Women's Cancer Week, I can't remember exactly, but, or individual people that you want to surprise them, because there is a special function at, whether it's the Kiwanis or whatever the group is, and you don't want it to be on an agenda in advance. And I think that when we recognize, personally, when we recognize an individual, there should always be an opportunity to do so. And I think that both the council chair, regardless of who the council chair is and the manager, will have discretion, making sure that it's appropriate to represent the town as a whole.
Anyone wish to express a concern about that?
No.
Good. The next one, Sean, if you would address that one.
The next one is, it's to identify council action items by sponsor and committee actions and recommendations. This impacts Section 108.2 and 108.2A. This would require that all ordinances, orders, resolves and proclamations identify the sponsor, which is, would be a specific counselor or a staff member, as well as if the item has been referred to the council committee, as well as list the committee's recommendation. The reason, this was purely, I will state as part of the personal statement, is that I initiated that. And the reason is that there are actually two ways in which you can actually introduce actions for the council to take. An individual council can actually make a recommendation and submit it to the town clerk on their own, without it actually being referred to a committee, as well as an item generally being worked through a committee. And I think that in a time in which we're being asked to be more transparent, to be more communicative, as well as, as well as using the expertise and advocacy of those who are putting the work forward, this helps us identify all of those and promotes a better, I think, a better council.
Questions or concerns relating to this matter? The next one, Sean, please.
Sure. The next item increases thresholds regarding reading of two separate days in a waiver for yeas and nays being taken. And what this deals with is, this was last amended, this is, I had to put that in there, in 1977. The change would increase the monetary threshold for the readings of ordinance and orders where we spend more than $1,000 in that action. The current, the current policy or procedure says it's $500. So what that says is that if there is an order, ordinance or resolve that gets passed, there has to be two readings if it is greater than $500 today. We said with the time, with the time value of money, let's be a little bit more realistic in today's business world, we increased it to 1,000. I did want to mention, although it wasn't part of discussion, I did look up and then based on inflation from 1977, $500 in 1977 has the same buying power, the same power of $2,032 today. So this is somewhat gets us a little closer, doesn't necessarily get us to par, but it's more about making it easier to get our work done.
Thank you. Questions or concerns about this matter? See, none? Sean, take the next one.
Thank you. Next item, this is a change to council committee descriptions in the context in which they function. It impacts Section 203, specifically three members of the finance committee. This changes the intent of the work to be completed by the finance committee. The prior language limits the finance committee's review, and I am undeniably that, because it is specific within the policy, review of appropriations to all departments except the Department of Education. The intent is that this provides consistency to actual practices and to the intent of the law with the recent changes in developing a joint approach to budgeting. This section's language, even as it's recommended and its change, remains a work in process. The personal side to this is that I personally had a conflict with the way the policy read, because it said that the finance committee should not review, basically should not review any appropriations at all, except for the total appropriation of the school department. But yet, for 20 years that I've been around, we've always looked at generally major categories. We don't look at the line items. It's, you know, how much is total educa, how much is maybe high school education versus middle school versus the different areas, the major components. And so the change is purely a recommendation, while staying within the intent and the boundaries of the charter onto what our current practices are.
Thank you. Comments or questions on this? Mr. Gazeem?
So this was obviously the one I've been waiting for.
[laughing]
Sorry to make the council sit through those other ones first. Yeah, this actually came up. I had some comments and concerns about this one from a few school board members as well. I understand the intent there, and I understand how the process works. I'm really concerned about the wording there, because my initial interpretation of reading this is that, yes, we will review them, but if we can only pass on, we can't adjust, we can only pass on recommendations up or down, does that become part of the overall recommendation of the finance committee? Or are we breaking them out separately? And if so, we, I don't really know what our authority is as a town finance committee to modify or adjust those, those educational line items. I know we can work with the school finance committee to request that they make those modifications and adjustments. And I think that's kind of how we've been trying to do that in the past. But I don't know if there's really any, I don't know what authority we would have with this changing. So I don't really have an alternative proposal for wording. Suffice to say that I, we obviously need to stay within the confines of the law for sure. And I would like to see that maybe looked at a little bit more thoroughly and come up with some better wording for that.
I looked at it and I thought, I liked it because it made clear that we were not looking at line items in the Department of Education budget. And I liked it because it made clear that we're not limited to just the bottom line. While we end up setting the bottom line, it's, you cannot set a bottom line without at least having a sense of whether or not you can support the overall direction in which that budget is going. Because they could be doing things that you go, whoa, be very difficult for me to get behind that. So I could see why you would want to have your finance committee have the discretion to at least have some broader discretion.
Right. So the question, again, and I don't necessarily disagree with that, I think that is our purview as the finance committee, is to look at the town's expenses, period, and the town's budget, period. My concern would be, what kind of action is coming out of this committee? So yes, we review it, that's typical, we do that anyway. If we don't like that number as a finance committee, it's an up or down vote, right? So the recommendation, as it's written here, would be, a recommendation would come out of finance to the council of either ought to pass unanimously, ought to pass, ought not to pass, or ought not to pass unanimously. So that doesn't really give us any kind of adjustment. What it really says is, the finance committee just didn't like that number, and we're going to debate that at the council level anyway. Right? So I guess what I'm looking at is, I prefer to see that as not having that discussion necessarily taken up and decided at the finance level, because that is still going to come to the committee, the full council, no matter what. I think the way we've worked it out now is that we have those discussions back and forth of what the expectations are of the school department with their budget, why they're presenting it. We ask questions, we discuss options and things like that. I would be more comfortable with that discussion coming out with an adjustment on the schools' budget presentation, not the finance committee making that determination. If they don't make that determination, we still have the option, in the full council, of saying, we've reviewed it and we're not comfortable with that, as individual counselors, and that's why. So I guess my concern is, is I don't want any of those decisions or those line item adjustments necessarily be made at the finance level. I think that's something that, that...
But it specifically says they're not, they're not going to be made, line item appropriations are not going to be made at the finance. All they're doing is reviewing the appropriations.
So then...
So that it gives you the opportunity to understand the bottom line in context.
So help you understand then, what comes...
At my understanding.
So what comes out of the finance committee then on the recommendations? Is that the overall town budget with our adjustments that we, because the finance committee looks at things and we make adjustments, right? We make recommendations for adjustments for the council to approve. So what would come out of the finance committee based on this policy then? Would it be a recommended pass, not pass for the school portion, and then a recommended pass, not pass for municipal? Or would it be one overall recommendation that basically says the whole budget?
Because the finance committee does make a recommendation on a total appropriation. And it may be different than what was presented in second reading and approved at second reading by the Board of Education. So I mean, that's, and that's based on the collective judgment of the finance committee. Sean?
So I think that, and Chris, I know you'll tell me if I'm not right.
No, I wouldn't do that.
And I say that with a respect, believe me. No, no, your opinion does matter a lot. So I, so I'm confused by the intent of the discussion, because if the concern is about what is coming out of, as a recommendation from the committee, that deals with identifying the council action items by sponsor and committee actions and recommendations, not by reviewing the, not by reviewing the applicable appropriations. So the, you stressed that the concern is about the recommendation that comes out of the committee. That recommendation is in a different section, it has nothing to do with this section. This section has to do with what, I don't want to say authority, but what responsibility the finance committee has in looking at the school budget, looking at the school budget and what level. The way it's currently worded, which is not today's practices and hasn't been for a while, is that it says in the policy, we are not to review the school department's appropriations, only the total appropriation. So as the chair of the finance committee, I would sit there and say, all I need to see is what is the total amount that they're spending and not look at any other value that's within their budget. None whatsoever, because the policy says that we're not supposed to do that. So I changed this to reflect what we have agreed to in the past several years and actually gotten better at it and more respectful at it over particularly the last two. So I agree with you around the line item piece. And unfortunately, when you abbreviate the intent, it doesn't tell you the exact language. And the exact language to read it on the change is, it says, "The finance committee shall review appropriation requests and revenue estimates for all offices, agencies and departments of the town, including the Department of Education," period. "The finance committee shall prepare recommended line item appropriation amendments, with the exception of the Department of Education budget, to the proposed budget to the town council prior to the public hearing and final reading." "The finance committee shall recommend only a total appropriation for the Department of Education." So it's completely out of the line item conversation and has been for at least two years. I hope that we never go to that line item. We have enough line items to talk about on our own side.
So again, I would ask the question, what kind of, what would we be looking at? What would that recommendation out of finance look like? Would it look like one recommendation for the entire budget with the school included? Or would it look at one recommendation municipal and then a separate recommendation for school?
Tom, this year, if you could, was it one recommendation that came out or was it two? Because it's two, it's two values that we approved within the...
I think it's two separate ones. I think that's a different question, it's not even being proposed to be changed. I think the difference is review as opposed to recommend. Is that, you're trying to just appreciate the...
On the appropriate, on the line, on the appropriation side, is to review those line item appropriations at whatever level the committee decides. I hope it's at a global level.
Right.
And then it has to make its recommendation, whether it's combined with the town or whether it's independent, I think depends upon the finance committee's decision on how it's being presented. I hope it's...
Yeah, I mean, the charter's silent as to whether it's a separate recommendation, but it's very clear that it's a bottom-line recommendation as regards the education budget.
And Chris, I agree with you, it should be, I personally, it worked very well where we came out of committee and said, we're recommending one number, it's one budget, one community, and that's how we took it, even though the final question on the agenda was separated into two.
You have to for the referendum.
Right, right. The order has education, municipal, capital.
Right.
Reported separately and then rolled into one combined number at the bottom for that appropriation.
So we are recommending a figure that goes on the referendum.
So we would see two separate recommendations then coming out of finance? We would see, because we don't, obviously, we can't discuss line items, but let's use arbitrary numbers. Let's say it's a $40 million school request. We review that in finance and we determined, we only want to appropriate 38 million. The recommendation would go to the council then. Would it be the total town budget of 70-plus million? Or would it be the recommendation for the school budget would be 38 million and the recommendation for the town budget would be whatever we've adjusted and corrected separately?
Actually, now that I think about it, Tom, I think at the, at the committee level this past year, we did actually approve two numbers.
I believe we did.
I think... We actually did approve two numbers at the end, a total appropriation to schools and then the other items based upon their, now that I think about...
Essentially, that would only be appropriate so the council understood clearly what the recommendation the committee is. Again, I don't think that's conflicting at all with this language.
No.
More importantly, with the charter.
Any further comment on that matter? We'll keep moving. Sean, you want to take the next one?
Sure. The next item is changes to the council committee's description regarding three members of Rules and Policies Committee to change the policy scope. I'm trying to remember what this was. Wait a second. Oh, so currently in the Rules and Policy, it says that, it specifically states that the only responsibility of the committee is to look at Chapter 302. However, the committee has traditionally been the author of, or at least reviewer of, recommendations for Chapter 101, which are the policies for the town. And so this simply is a change that changes the scope to be... And so this simply is a change that changes the scope to be consistent with what it's currently practices and has for 20 years.
Comments or questions concerning this item? Seen none? Take the next one, Sean, please.
The next item increases the council chair's authority to act in Section 203. What this does is really a common practice that's happened again for 20 years that I know of, where the council chair is an ex officio member of all council standing committees. It does not state that actually up to now, it has not stated that in that policy. But it also authorizes that person to vote in the absence of any regular member. Again, it's about respect and about getting the work done. We've had situations that are unpredictable and unfortunate, but where members might be sick or, and things just simply need to get done. So only in the cases of emergency and discretion would the chair then act in that capacity if someone was absent so that work can move forward.
Comments on that one? I have found that, I think the chairman, chairperson carries the responsibility of being aware of who is unable to attend and needs to use their best effort to attend so as to have a quorum, a working committee in every instance, so I support this. Further comments on this one? Take the next one, please.
And the last one is changes to the travel policy, travel policy to reimbursements. I obviously typed this up in a very quick fashion. That's the travel policy, the conference workshop expenditures, request for advance payments and reimbursements. There was some incorrect titling within that, but the fact is we're eliminating significant part of that. Again, this goes back to one of those funny stories, I guess, in a way, from 20 years ago. The thing is that times have changed, the town has changed. So the contingency fund for the town council has decreased significantly. I want to say it's less than $1,000 bucks and maybe even less than $750. But in the past, counselors would go to conferences, national conferences, and everything from plane tickets to hotels to other incidental expenditures, and that's a broad title for what was being spent, could be submitted, there was a process. Basically, the change says that the finance committee will approve as part of its budget, not approve, but will recommend the contingency for the town council going forward as it has always. That the policy, we've gotten rid of all of these exceptions to the rules and processes where the town manager had to jump through hoops to get things done, is basically the town manager will process any requests consistent with the standard operating procedures of the town for every other employee. So if the money is there, then the money can be appropriated based upon, at this point, it's the town manager's discretion. But with $650 in the budget, that is obviously very limited. But it's an outdated source given today's environment, thankfully.
I just want to point out, it's not entirely at my discretion. It's subject to the existing rules for all town employees.
Right, sorry, yes.
Comments concerning that? Seen none? Any further comments before we vote?
I just want to, so first, again, thanks. I just wanted to acknowledge Counselor Chiazo's comment because it is important. I think the one thing that you can't regulate, you can't write into policy is how people are going to behave and how people must respect each other through the deliberations and the conversations that are undertaken. And I think that we have made significant grounds and I hope that every council after takes the same level of appreciation and consideration for our colleagues on the school board as part of that joint discussion around budgets and that it shouldn't be forgotten even though it might not necessarily be written.
Thank you. Further comments? Seen none? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Five one. Counselor Chiazo's. Order 1652, Act to Adopt the Fiscal Year 2016-2017 School Budget Resolutions as Required by State Statutes. Anyone wishing to comment on this, please approach the podium. May I have a motion?
Some moved?
Second. Discussion. Any comment from the town manager on this?
No, I wish I could shed more light on this, other than the fact that state law does require us to, or you to take action to, in accordance with these very specific appropriation categories, if you will. And so the school department and the school board has come up with this. This is obviously consistent with the bottom line approval given.
That's what I think the public needs to know. Any further comment? Counselor Chiazo, Abin.
Much better looking. I don't know how you got us confused.
You talk a lot, though.
I think it's ironic that this actually follows the prior discussion around the issue because here we are approving recommendations based upon specific classifications of expenses within the school budget. So the question I have is that if we can't review those, then why on earth are we now approving the allocations within those budgets? But that's being rhetorical because I understand state statute.
Yes, thanks. Counselor Oden.
I'm just curious. This is coming from the state. They've written this up to say that these are your sections and this is how much, this is in alignment with the EPS.
These are the categories.
These are the categories, aligned with the essential program service, EPS. No, nothing to do with EPS. It's just these are the categories, it's how much you're spending.
I don't know if it's for comparative purposes or reporting purposes, but they forced them all...
Other comments? Seen none? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Act on the request from the deputy tax collector to authorize the town manager to sign a release deed on property located at 331 Pleasant Hill Road, map R099 slash lot 038. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter and the public, please approach the podium. Accept a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, town manager want to, do you have any context in it?
There were liens placed on this property. They have all been satisfied and so we now need to finalize the matter, issue a release deed, so the title is clear in that regard.
Discussion. Counselor Abin.
So is there any way of creating a policy that says that you can be authorized going forward to automatically be able to do this without bringing it to the council?
I'll check that. My suspicion is no. The council's the only one that has the authority. And frankly, I wouldn't recommend that. I mean, I'll check into it, but I think despite the fact it takes up time on your agenda and time on your meeting, I think it's important for the council to consider these one by one and issue specific recommendations. We're dealing with real estate and title issues, so I think as much clarity, the better.
Other comments or questions? Seen none? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Act on, this is order 16 dash 54. Act on the request for a mass gathering permit from Taylor Crabbe to hold the insane inflatable 5K on Friday, September 16th and Saturday, September 17th at Scarborough Downs located at 90 Payne Road. Any member of the public wishing to address this, please approach the podium. Motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Chris?
And I apologize, it may say something in one of the chief's letters here. Is this a for-profit event or is it a fundraising event or what is this?
Chief, you want to enlighten us on that?
I'm not 100% sure. My understanding is it is a for-profit firm. They do these all over the country. But I believe there is a component where they do raise funds for the benefit of a local organization. I'm not sure who that is for this particular event.
It doesn't impact my decision one way or another. I'm just curious what the purpose of it was.
Good. And all the paperwork is in order?
It is. We have not finalized the nuts and bolts of all the agreements, but we do have written agreement that they are going to comply with the staff reviews recommendation.
And they've done this before here?
Two years ago, they did a similar event.
Satisfactory event from your point of view?
It did go satisfactorily and they're actually anticipating quite a few less participants this year for some reason. Ticket sales have not been as robust as they anticipated.
The other value of this venue is that it's kind of self-contained. They're able to kind of park on site. There's good access in and out, so it doesn't put the sort of strains some of the other events will do on the community and on public safety.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Seen none? All in favor? Opposed?
Just as a side, we have seen an increasing amount of, I guess it's a business anymore, for-profit types of groups. And some of the events can be quite impactful on the community, whether it's, you know, a road race or a bike race closing down huge sections of your town. So just something to be aware of going forward.
Non-action items, I don't believe there are any. Standing special committee reports and layers of reports. Chris, let's start down with you.
All right. So a couple of things. Let's start with education first. It's the hot button issue for tonight. You guys have in front of you, or excuse me, everybody has in front of them. This is Superintendent Kuchenberger's entry plan. This is what she discussed at the last school board meeting. They have it in printed form. So they asked me to distribute it to council members. It will also be available to the general public, either here at town hall or at Summerfest. So Superintendent Kuchenberger will be there as well. They didn't really cover any other major issues at the last meeting. They're scheduled for tomorrow, so we'll see what the next item is for them. For energy, we actually had a very productive meeting this morning. We discussed a few things. The biggest one really that we looked at was a, we reviewed the impact of the composting collection point for the various ones around town. And we've actually taken, I think, last year or 2016, we took out, excuse me, yeah, 2016, we took out 7 million tons out of the waste stream and this year so far...
Seven...
Not 7 million.
I'm sorry, 7 tons, 7 tons. Sorry, excuse me, pardon me.
That was successful.
Yeah, 7 tons out of May and June of last year and then 5.8 tons so far this month. So ultimately, it's a successful program so far. We're looking at expanding that into a pilot program, working with Cuffela to implement that. There'll be some educational rollouts that'll come through. We'll determine which neighborhood. We've got it, I think, narrowed down to a couple of different places, but as that becomes available, we'll certainly release that and there'll be an educational piece in front of that as well. So certainly we've seen positive results so far out of the composting program just from the local collection points. And the hope is that we'll see even broader impact with curbside collection. Second thing was the solar report came out for the town. And I apologize, I don't have the report in front of me. I certainly can make that available to council members if they choose. Basically, the report shows that the facility down at the Public Works, or excuse me, Community Services down there by the pond is performing basically where we thought it was going to perform. There's some good data in there about the amount of CO2 and carbon emissions and things like that that we've removed as a result of this project. Revenues, I think, are pretty much on par with what we expected them to be. And I think this is year one, I think, of the report, so...
First full year.
First full year, yeah. So no surprises. Everything seems to be going well. Nothing really reported there. And energy is going to continue to focus on certainly looking at the composting, curbside composting plant as well as looking at the general energy policies. We'll start reviewing those as well, possibly with an eye towards the overall development plan for the town.
I was asked by someone today whether the school had ever entertained solar panels on its roof. I don't know if you're aware of whether they have.
I'm not aware of any kind of add-ons, any plans to do an add-on. I think a lot of that would obviously look at ROIs and things like that. I wouldn't rule that out. I mean, certainly geothermal at Wentworth, the jury's still out on what kind of cost savings because I think we're still looking at electrical consumption to see where that lines up. Kind of get a lot more, higher electrical costs but lower fuel costs. So I mean, I think that would be something that, certainly anything we could do jointly together as a municipality and a school district would be great. They've got a lot of roof surface area.
As the liaison to the Board of Education, I think that probably would be, and being on the energy committee and thus familiar with what we're doing, that would be worth at least approaching the subject.
Yeah, I think Todd, one of the things that I'm trying to work with and I know Tom's seen this too, is Todd Jepson has a good facility maintenance program and plan that he's got in place. And I think that might be a good kind of segue into that once we start looking at how they're managing facilities and things like that. If we could bring in some municipal structure to that as well, that might be a good opportunity to look at overall what's the best place for the town to do investments. Maybe it is, you know, the high school roof or something like that. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because it's a third-party investment and then the town got the benefit of a reduced electrical fee with the option to purchase after the tax incentives, federal tax incentives for the private investor had largely gone away after six, seven years. And so it's...
I will say that, you know, I don't want to politicize anything, but there is some question about where the, what credits are going to be coming forward in the future. I know right now the PUC, it's a kilowatt per kilowatt credit, my understanding, Tom.
That's true.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know what the future is going to look like. No one can really predict that. But certainly that plays into the discussion on investment and where to best put the resources. And the sustainability coordinator, I'm sure, will have a big impact on that as well. I would hope they would.
So hey, yeah, just three quick updates. Coastal Harbor, as I've kind of reported in the past, has had sort of an ongoing conversation about the right balance of down in the Five Point Co-op and some of our beaches, how do we have, how can we ensure that, you know, appropriate access for both those that are commercially efficient and recreational use? There's been some issues with parking. They have done kind of a site walk. They actually have decided to form sort of an ad hoc committee to get some input. They're going to be looking at that over the winter months and hopefully come back to the council sometime in the spring for some proposals. So that process is moving forward. They also had a conversation around as there is more and more demand to use sort of the facilities, the beaches and the access for recreational type activities like kayak rentals and those types of things. They'd like to kind of be involved in kind of looking at that and making recommendations. So they're working on some of that. The Shellfish Commission, there's been a real issue as I reported. The clam flats and their production has been kind of variable over the last couple of years. The clam production's down. Actually, tonight, in a second, I'll thank Tom, there's actually a presentation being done at the public library by the Down East Institute and they're summarizing all the types of things that are sort of the natural predators on clams and other things. Tom has made arrangements to have that videotaped so that's available for some of those commission members that couldn't make it. And it'll be available for anybody on the committee that, anybody in this group that's interested or anybody in the public. So we'll get some information.
It'll probably run on public access too, so it'll run.
And so for people that are interested in trying to understand that, that information will be out there. And I guess that pretty much sums it up. The senior advisory group met. They're, as we know, Summerfest is this Friday. They're going to be down there. They're going to have, you know, a place for people to come and stop by and say hi. They're trying to do some surveys to try to gauge the interest of the community, the senior community, in different activities and things they'd like to see. So if anybody out there listening wants to stop by, they'd kind of love to hear from you about what they'd like to see sort of the senior group offer this community. So with that, I think that's the summary of the groups.
Good. Thanks, Peter. Jump down to Counselor Abin.
Absolutely. As I talk about others, if you can pass these down. First item I'll talk about, actually, I don't know whether this is good or bad, but I can confirm that I was elected to the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee. So one more commitment, but it's actually very important because it is a group that works directly with advocating municipal, what's the word, municipal challenges with state government. Our first meeting is actually on September 8th. I've actually chosen to focus a lot of my attention regarding appropriations and municipal revenue sharing and more financially driven topics, including a couple of favorites in fisheries and wildlife. But EcoMaine has not met this summer yet. It'll get started back up. But looking forward to it. It's going to be a very tough market, so they have some financial challenges that obviously impact us as a community because hopefully they can take care of that without increasing tipping fees or assessments. The library board also had a vacation this summer, but they have actually been working vacation from certain meetings. They are actively working on their strategic plan. I believe they're finalizing that the week of August 23rd. As soon as that is available, I'll make sure that each of you do get a copy of that and it is shared, once it is public. And the last item I wanted to mention was finance committee. I just passed this around, but our finance director was able to provide us with a... but our Finance Director was able to provide us with a balance sheet and income statement for the year ending, again, I do want to clarify, because it is not documented on this, but these are unaudited and internal, not that, they're just internal numbers that haven't been checked by an auditor, so keep that in mind, so there are fluctuations between her preparations and as well as the accounting that is done through an auditing process. Just some highlights to point out, we had a very, very successful year, at least preliminarily, total assets are up approximately $2.1 million, total liabilities are down $500,000, fund balance increased $2.6 million, keeping in mind that about $1 million of that was planned as part of the bond issuance for the last two years, so we knew that. So, outside of that one planned, it's still a $1.6 million surplus is a very strong position to be in. Notable demarcations within the budget, particularly on the revenue side, is that as we predicted, excise continues to increase, given the, I think, I like the term that Karen used earlier, the sound and if not robust economy is allowing us to realize pretty healthy increases over budget regarding excise, but also we're seeing that within our permits, and then ironically, the other one was, revenue sharing was a significant adjustment over what was previously budgeted, which is a portion that we receive from the state. And then, of course, the due diligence and the fiscal acumen by our managers, or the manager and his managers, expenses are below budget, there was one particular area that we're going to concentrate on to make sure that we're not overplanning, I guess, in some ways, and that's within the Community Services, looking at pricing and making sure that we're not pricing ourselves out, because that typically has been a source of very strong excess revenues. So, it's nice to be able to report, we are in a very, very healthy position, and it looks like our financial work is working.
Thank you. Councilor Rowan?
I have none at this time.
Thank you, Councilor Caterino.
Yes, I did not make the Conservation Commission meeting because I was away on vacation, but I read their notes from their meeting, and they're working on, if you recall, we had a workshop with them regarding, you know, future impacts, potential impacts on sea level rise, and they are working on exactly a plan to bring forward to the council as to how to meet with, you know, various department heads and whatever to get more, you know, information and a back and forth there. Ordinance met yesterday, we will be forwarding to you, I believe, on the next meeting, which is, what, September 7th, I think? A new blasting ordinance, we never, we've never had one, and there was some blasting that was associated with the new Martins Point Health Center, which is a pretty dense population area, and some of the people over there were concerned about impacts, and then they were concerned about why don't we have blasting ordinance, and the Chief Thurlo had been working on something for a while, but this just brought it to the forefront, so expect to see something on that at our next council meeting, and we also have a couple of minor, I think they're minor changes to some potential traffic ordinance parking situation. So, that's it for me on committees.
Thank you. Town Managers' Report.
Yes, a couple of quick things, I appreciate the bit of the reprieve over the summer month, we've had a great opportunity to really move forward some projects. I'm pleased to announce that the gateway signs have finally ended, this is kind of the second and final stage of our signage program, so this is at all the entrances to town, the major entrances have a bit larger signs, and then there'll be smaller signs, there are smaller signs at the smaller entrances like East Grand Avenue, Mold Orchard. We were successful in approaching service clubs in the Scarborough Community Chamber to help underwrite some of the costs, as is customary with these welcome signs, it's appropriate and customary to put the social clubs that meet in town and those, their logos and such, so they were very quick to support us in that regard, and I think they've been that way historically as well. Thanks to Public Works, they did all the installation, which helped keep the cost down. I want to report on Partridge Lane, you may recall, many months back, Partridge Lane, we came forward with a request, unfortunately, Mr. Brown has been totally unresponsive at every single turn, and so we find ourselves now in the position, enough time has passed, and the authorization you already granted me, I've actually awarded a demolition bid to Resguera Brothers after an RFP process, with the action you took those many months ago, we had a legal right to recover those costs, so we'll be moving forward earlier this, probably in September at this point. I've been invited to be, to sit on a panel at the MMA Convention, and this is a panel around municipal energy initiatives, and our Trigen project was identified as kind of a unique thing, which it is, and there'll be four other folks, I don't even know all the panelists at this point, but I'm pleased to represent the town and be part of that convention. I'm also pleased to announce, we're in the height of recruitments for new positions here in Town Hall, the Assistant Town Manager position, we had 55 applicants from frankly all over the country, and very pleased with the quality, and today was the first day of interviews, I've chosen not to be involved myself for the first round, Mike Thurlo is one of the folks on the interview panel, and they have three or four more tomorrow, so things are moving right on schedule in that regard. And the Sustainability Coordinator, we have 26 applicants so far, quite pleased actually with the pool, and that position closes Sunday, so again, we're kind of on track to get positions filled up for that October 1st start date. And lastly, we do expect to go to tax commitment this week, Friday this week, in light of the recent law court decision regarding those 2012 appeals, at least a portion of them, we will be putting in place for this commitment, we'll follow the law court's directive in that regard. Ironically, it will actually add value to the town, I don't, I can't estimate, it's not massive or significant, but it's certainly not going to be detrimental to the overall valuation of the town, and that's really because the law court decision remanded just a portion, the town was largely victorious in all of the respects, in terms of the court affirming our assessment practices, but for one piece involving kind of adjoining lots, and this is a, we followed a, really a statewide practice that's been consistent for 30 years or better across the state, and supported by main revenue service, I would add, so this decision will have statewide impact, frankly, and will have some negative impact for the 40 or so properties that have benefited from this program of having an adjoining lot being valued a little less, and we just talked briefly today, but we expect to do some direct outreach to those folks, so they understand why their value's changing, and we'll probably be doing some meetings with them as well. I think that's it.
Question about that, or is that appropriate, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, there's no grace period, that has to be implemented immediately, as far as we understand the reading from the court?
Fortuitously, I suppose, since we're not at commitment, we have time to make that change now, and we think it's best to follow the directive from the law court as soon as we possibly can, so we will be. You know, the other matters, the remand is back to the Board of Assessment Review, they're looking to meet as soon as entirely possible, we have some challenges, it's still summer to some, but I expect they'll be meeting within the month to deal with that issue, and at this point, where we've been doing some financial modeling, we don't expect there'll be many, there'll be little, if any, financial impact, given the court ruling.
Chris?
So, just to follow up to that, Tom, if I could, please, so we're going to go ahead and decouple outright, and then whatever comes out of the review board, we'll assess afterwards, or?
Well, this is on a going-forward basis, it's not really decoupling these, we had adopted a standard practice of adjoining lots in common ownership, those adjoining lots were valued at a lesser number, if you will, they'll simply be valued at market rate, and so we'll make that change going forward, the Board of Assessment Review will deal with how to deal with past tax years.
Okay.
I happen to be one of these people who had one of those adjoining lots. I know two years ago, I was asked whether I wanted it to be contiguous or not, and I said absolutely not, because it's a developable lot, so...
And you're likely, you're not likely to be affected?
No, I know that, and I understand that, but people back at that point had an opportunity whether they, so there should be some knowledge, now I understand some people have forgotten that they were asked about that, but, so my question to you, is this 30 or 40, is that who was left over after, or is that, was that...
Thirty or forty are those that, that...
Chose not.
Chose not to.
That wanted us to continue for valuation, for assessment purposes, to consider them particulate.
Consolidated, as if they were consolidated.
Right.
Okay.
And gain the tax benefit from that assumption.
Right, okay.
Any other questions?
Questions? Good. Councilor comments, start down.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Sure, go right ahead, go right ahead.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Did you update us on fireworks, what, just, we've been doing that survey, and...
I will defer to that.
Or are you going to address that later? Okay, I will, okay.
Good. Chuck?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Good, thank you.
I also have nothing.
I'm sorry, but I do have something. I just want to remind everybody, I happened to, when I was out knocking on doors for the last month, I've been running into people, particularly elderly people who have wells that are not drilled wells, they're what we call dug wells, and they're worried about the drought, and actually, some of them had been having to go to the store and buy water, so to speak. So, I talked to Mr. Hall about if we could put something out to remind people that Scarborough does have a water source, it's free, it's available to the public, so, you know, you don't have to go into the facility, you don't have to ask permission, it's at the Dunston Fire Station, which is at 639 US Route 1, and there's, when you're looking directly at the fire station, it's, I'm terrible with directions, so on the left-hand side of the building, there's a big sign there, a blue sign that says, "Public Drinking Water", and just feel free to stop in, you do have to bring your own container, though, but it is a source of water for people, because this drought is affecting some of the less deep wells in the area, so...
Thank you. Councilor Hayes?
Just a couple of quick comments, first of all, Summerfest is this Friday, I hope to see everybody there, it's a great opportunity for us to come together as a community and enjoy this wonderful weather we've had, hopefully, knock on wood, we'll get it for Friday, so looking forward to that, it's always a nice, a nice kind of cap off to the summer as we get ready to send the kids back to school, it's always a nice time. I also did want to just clarify my position earlier on Councilor Baybine's motion, I don't want people to misinterpret that, to think that there's any mal-intent, or I believe there's any mal-intent or anything, I simply just didn't agree with the wording of it, I think the intent is there, I would agree with that 100%, I don't think there's any, anything going on behind the scenes or anything like that, or, I don't want it to be misinterpreted, so I just simply didn't like the wording of it, and I thought maybe we'd get a little bit more input, maybe, let's say, from either legal or another group, so, so I don't want that to be misconstrued, so I do support the principle of it, it was just a more of a technical thing.
I interpreted your comments to be some dissatisfaction with the wording, and hopefully you'll have the opportunity to look at the wording, maybe bounce it off some others, we have a second reading, and the opportunity to make amendments and work, perhaps work with Councilor Baybine on those concerns. Thank you. Councilor Hayes?
Just hope everybody enjoys the rest of summer, it's going fast.
Yeah. I did want to extend a thank you to the Cornerstone Baptist Church, they extended an invitation to me and to my wife over the Fourth of July holidays, they had a luncheon thank you party for public officials, and it was a very nice event on Memorial Field, and they were very gracious, and I appreciated the opportunity to represent the town council, and told them a little bit about the kind of cooperative attitude that we've been successful in implementing in this past year, so, thank you for Jeffrey Bateman, the pastor, and the Cornerstone Baptist Church. The fireworks survey has had over 1,000 responses at this point, really extraordinary degree of interest. I thought that the best way for us to pursue it is to schedule in the future a workshop where we have something of a listening session, and let people who might be on both sides of the question come in and discuss it, and give us the opportunity then to exchange our own feedback that we've been getting from constituents in the town, so that's how I think we'll take the next step, see if we can get a bit of a consensus on what direction this thing should go, at which point it would go to ordinance. The shorefront owner tax abatement suit was addressed by the town manager, the decision is a very well-reasoned decision as to why the town was absolutely correct and appropriate in the reasoning that it used to conduct a partial revaluation of the shorefront properties. It was, to say the least, very thorough, and that was, I think, as the public is aware, the gist of that lawsuit was that. The other issue that has received some attention in the newspaper article that was today, was one that actually doesn't have any effect on the shorefront property owner's property, it was this ancillary lot, side lot, that is undeveloped, that is contiguous to a developed lot, and had been treated under state authorization as entitled to be treated as if it were consolidated, even though it was not. The Supreme Court found that to not be an appropriate practice, and so there'll be numerous towns in the state that will change that practice, the consequence of it is to add assessed value to the town, so that it doesn't have an adverse financial consequence in any fashion, so I did want to just comment further on that. As far as the organics issues, they've been in the news lately, the town of South Portland is grappling with this whole issue of how do you enforce an organics policy that you apply townwide, and I've always had a problem with that, it is the bugaboo of anyone who thinks, yes, trying to get less pesticides used is a good idea, but how do you go about it? It's a state problem, and many people feel it should be addressed at the state level. What I thought, we have a policy that applies to the public space, our fall fields and lawns, our program is presently in the capable hands of our Pest Management Committee, they are following the South Portland and Portland initiatives to see what's going on, by next year, we should have a pretty good handle from a 2012 start time for our policy, that's when we began, in May of 2012, so that we'll have a good handle on a cost-benefit analysis, the cost, implications of this, and the benefits that we've seen. So, that's the kind of thing that I think the Finance Committee will be probably looking at and giving us some guidance, and the Pest Management Committee will be looking at to assess it, and it probably, probably won't be my call, but at some point in the next six or nine months, a workshop to have some thorough discussion and make sure that we all have the same data, and have a good hearing of the issue. Anything further for the cause of the town? None?
So, regarding the fireworks, I think the only thing I'd like to point out is that there's, you know, the next time that we have permitted fireworks is in December, so there's really no rush for us to act on that.
Exactly, and I think we'll keep the polling going for a little bit longer, and then just as a practical matter, close it up.
Vote early and often, is that...
Yes.
The only time is legal.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, we are adjourned.